We'll call the October meeting of the Appomattox Town Council to order. Would you welcome any visitors we have?
Welcome.
Sam, you're not a visitor. Sorry, sir. This time we'll get the Reverend Duck to lead us in a prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Reverend Duck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's pray. Our Father which art in heaven, how do it be thy name? Truly, you are a good God, and we beseech you, look to you, trust in you tonight that you will bless this meeting and bless the council members and their families, bless the staff, and guide and direct in this meeting that, Lord, surely your will be done. We're grateful for this community and the great time that was had this past weekend in the railroad festival. And now, Lord, as we move forward, we just pray that you'll give guidance and direction in all things accomplished to your glory and to the good of the people in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Let us stand, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Duck. This time I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Move that we approve the agenda.
Motion made and properly seconded in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mayor Conner, congratulations on the momentous occasion of Appomattox County's 100-year anniversary. The centennial milestone is a profound testament to the enduring spirit, rich history, and vibrant community that define the Appomattox County and the town. Over the past century, Appomattox County has grown and thrived, building a legacy rooted in resilience, dedication, and a strong sense of community pride. From its historic landmarks to its devoted citizens, the county continues to embody the values that make it a remarkable place to live, work, and visit. The anniversary is more than a celebration of years. It's a tribute to the people, partnerships, and values that have defined your journey. As you celebrate this significant anniversary, I commend all who have contributed to the county's progress and success. May the next 100 years bring continued prosperity, unity, and growth for Appomattox County and its residents. Congratulations once again on this remarkable achievement. That is from our member of Congress, Representative John McGuire. I'm glad to read this. I will talk to him about his wording a little bit. But we are a community, and the town is just one important piece to that community. I'm glad that we're able to lead it, guide it, and hopefully enhance it for the future. As always, I want our citizens free to bring their redress of grievances to us in a peaceful manner. I think that's the best way to be done so that democracy, representative democracy can carry on in this fine country. Thank you all. Do we have any scheduled public appearances? Next item, adoption of consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered routine by the council and will be approved or received by one motion in the form listed. Items may be removed from the consent agenda for discussion under the regular agenda upon motion of any council member and duly seconded. Adoption of council meeting minutes for September 8th and September 23rd, 2025.
Move that we adopt the minutes as presented.
Motion made and properly seconded in discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? No. Motion carries. Unfinished business. At this time, we'd like to introduce, and I hope I do not mispronounce, Giuffredo Granger of the Central Virginia Planning District Commission. Mr. Granger will give an update on the preliminary findings from the survey responses regarding the comprehensive plan. Mr. Granger, let me take the mic.
All right. Town Council, thank you guys so much for allowing me to be here. My name is Giuffredo Granger. I'm cheesy Alfredo, so I get people to remember my name. But I am with the Central Virginia Planning District Commission. I've been working with Rob as well as other staff members to update the comprehensive plan for the town of Appomattox. And so this presentation, I'm pretty much just going to go through. You guys should have the colored copies. So I'm definitely not going to expound as much time on the data part that will be part of the comprehensive plan in its entirety. I just kind of highlight a couple of spots. Tonight's meeting, I just want to make sure to kind of get updates on the goals and objectives, to make sure that we're kind of in line with that, to make sure we're kind of fleshing that out if we're still in conjunction with that, or if we want to update or remove a couple of those items. And so I'll get to that particular part when we get to that part of the presentation. And so with this, again, just a couple of things here. We want to go up the updated comparative census data, compiled survey responses, and recommendations. Like I said, before, the discussion of the direction of the current town goals and the recommendations of adding housing and infrastructure components to the goals. All right. So as far as the demographic data, as you can see, the current population, according to the census, is 2,085 people. Within the town is an increase of 234 since 2018, which was the last comp plan year. There was a 7% increase in 2020 due to COVID. And yeah, so the age groups that pretty much came or migrated this way, as you can see, the biggest jump was in the age of 40 to 44, in the 30 to 34 range. Most of the people that were coming in were pretty much domestic migration. And once we get to the numbers, you'll see the cost of living here was a lot more affordable. And so if people are coming from different areas that have way more income and they're able to work from home during the COVID years, they were able to, you know, take advantage of the bigger numbers as far as their income and paid less to live in this particular region, in this particular area. As you can see, the demographics for the population in town pretty much increased and were projected to increase about 8%, which is just a little under half of what is projected for the county itself. There isn't any signs of declining in population, which is a good thing to see. Next slide here, household size. There was a large jump within the four to five-person household within this last five-year time slot. That can be attributed to just having folks that are living together within their homes to afford housing, or not even just housing, but just afford different things within the area. This cost of living goes up. As you can see, the town is in conjunction with the state as far as owner-occupied homes, which is a good thing. And, you know, with this particular trend, the median household income is about 47,000, just under 48,000. And so as you can see, over the last 12 months, household income is right around that 35,000 to 50,000 mark, which is in, you know, right in stride with the median household income. Next slides here. Yeah, for the housing values, as you can see, for the town, the median house value is showing at 124, 125,000 for houses, which is very affordable for the area. And as you can see, about 50% of your housing stock is right around the 100 to 150,000 mark, which is very affordable for this particular area. As far as the employment sector, there was a jump of healthcare support workers, of course, due to COVID, material moving, office, office and administration. And then sales is more so is the home, workers from home, selling jobs from there. And as you can see, Appomattox actually leads the region in high school graduation, 52%. So we'll allude to that when we get to that goal a little further on in the slide. All right. Any questions on any of the data thus far? All right. I'm going to move on to the survey results. So these were the survey questions. It was asking basically, do you live in the town or do you live outside the town? And as you can see, it's right around 50/50. Those that live in the town, a lot of them, well, I would say a quarter of them had more than 20 years living here. So it was kind of like half and half as far as those that were responding to the survey. And these were the results of the survey. So the first question, what things do you want to see changed? Then Appomattox. And the leading one was government. And I'll expound on that just a little bit. Is that changing government per se as far as you guys? It was just different things as far as code enforcement and zoning regulations. Also, the next biggest item was restaurants. After that, downtown revitalization, community engagements and events, and infrastructure improvements. And then for the second question, or the last question, what things do you want to see? Pretty much the biggest number that was coming in was restaurants and shopping, followed by economic improvements, and Splash Park, town pool, and just teenage activity. So that's kind of just a little gist of, just, I had to categorize the questions as far as those responses that were coming in. So moving forward, as far as the key takeaways for the first question, what they were asking for as far as the government was consistent follow-through of code enforcement with better transparency. Now, most of those questions that were, or most of the people that were responding to that were people that lived in the actual county outside of the town. So lower property tax, property food tax, and boom for fresh perspectives within town council. Next was better cooperation between town and county. And as far as the choices they were talking about, as far as restaurants, Chick-fil-A, KFC, Applebee's, Starbucks, they wanted steakhouse. That was one, the repeat things they kept asking for is something like Texas Roadhouse or Bad Cop House. Just something else, a sit-down meals that everyone can enjoy themselves here and they don't have to go out of town to enjoy themselves. Cleaning up downtown and revitalizing the old buildings for mixed use, more activities for the teens and youth, with community involvements, with concerts and festivals, I think, something like the railroad festival where even more, people just want to see it more often. Improve walkability, so just extending the sidewalks, repurposing the Wilbun's Grocery Store for mixed use. And I, you know, alluded to that, probably Brownfield's Plan that was disrupted last year, and then improvement to the town parks with the add Splash Pad. So for the final question, takeaways for things you want created. Like I said, they just want better variety. They want something to feel like they can call their own. Not necessarily, I don't know if it's a mom-and-pop restaurant, but just something that the town can be known for, like people from other areas are coming into town to go to this particular restaurant or going to this particular attraction. Economic improvements, better use of the abandoned buildings to reuse them, Thomasville Building, Wilbun's Grocery, create tourism, help ease taxes, make this a top-of-the-line place that will attract people and attract tourists to come in and stay longer than just a day trip. And then the attraction they were talking about is Splash Park, town pool, dog park shelter, skate park, bowling, movie theater, or YMCA, or some sort of indoor recreational center is what they were asking for. Urgent care facility is something that, you know, was mentioned multiple times as well. Use one of those buildings, use them. But there isn't a urgent care facility in town. And then something as far as senior living options. There was a few mentions of better softball options. I think it was more of a sect that group that wanted to kind of voice their opinions on that. But activities aimed to teenagers as far as movies, paintball, just something that kids can do. They said more so than just hanging out in the parking lot at Walmart. That's kind of the main consensus, make sure there's something for kids to do. And then, like I said, increase festivities, sorry, festivals, concerts, and community events to highlight the town's amenities and what they're offering. So that is the survey findings in a nutshell. Are there any questions, comments, or anything that anyone wants to allude to before I go on to the closing objectives? Okay. All right. And again, as I mentioned before, a number of the reuse recommendations for the Wilbun's Grocery Building, Garmour Factory, hardware building are found in the area Brownfield Plan. So I will be using a lot of those concepts within this particular comprehensive plan as well. All right. So with that, we're going on to the questions. And what I did was summarize the, I guess, the goals, better list it, and make sure that we are in stride with what the town wants to continue to move forward with if we're going to keep it, adjust it, remove it, or expand. So the first one is maintaining and enhancing the town's character. From the previous comp plan, it stated updating a yearly action plan for business commercial improvements to encourage the expansion of downtown revitalization, improve the community parks, Splash Park, and then establishing a farmer's market in Medford Center in town. So are there any, well, I know for the farmer's market, there is somewhat of a farmer's market, I think, from just previous conversation with the planning commission, they were saying just having something as far as marketing what's actually here. So a farmer's market has been established. It's just more so just letting people know that it is here in town. So outside of that, is there any additions, anything that we need to remove to this particular objective or this goal? Okay. I'm going to the next one, effective and safe transportation.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry to interrupt, but for our comp plan, this is your opportunity to, unless, this may encompass what you want to see here in town, but this would be your opportunity to add something as council as we move forward with the comprehensive plan. So if there's something that is not in there that you feel like the town needs or that we should be trying for, this is the time to say so.
I will move to the next slide. Oh, I'm sorry. Not the next slide, but the next goal, which is effective and safe transportation. From the previous comp plan, it said implement Route 24 corridor plan, which is phased out. Incorporate pedestrian and bike facilities to expand multimodal options as far as like bike lanes, sidewalks, multi-use paths. That will also help with downtown revitalization and making it more walkable within this particular area. Support commuter programs and explore options for town-wide public transit. Seeking funding, which I can pretty much remove this one, but yeah, seeking funding for safety improvements on Lee Grant Church and Horse Street. So that will be removed because you guys are currently working on that now. And then one addition or expansion is VDOT and current safety improvement plans. One thing that was brought was the South Side Collector Plan, which I'll look to add that on to the comp plan, just to have that in, have that within the verbiage of the comp plan. So as you go after additional funding, it'll show that there is something along those lines. And also, I'll be pulling any, anything from the six-year improvement plans from VDOT to make sure that those are added. As far as recommendations, I did have a meeting with the correspondent from VDOT, and he was able to kind of give me more of the multimodal solutions to find out what, you know, looking at crash data, looking at different places of improvement, what areas or recommendations could facilitate, I'm sorry, facilitate any kind of improvements in the phases, and just make sure that's listed within the comp plan. Are there any questions or additions or anything you want to remove besides what's already listed there for the effective and safe transportation goal?
Can you give me a more in-depth on the VDOT South Side Collector Plan?
I'm going to take the words right out of my mouth.
Yes, sir.
What is that?
And so there is a document that was provided to me. Basically, it is rerouting the, rerouting the traffic that comes in basically from school to school, taken through a back route. That way, it's coming from 460 and not all down Confederate. But it's basically being rerouted on another route that's kind of, I'm trying to get all the roads together. Basically, it's just rerouting it that way. It's coming from, the way the map was showing, from the elementary school to the high school, whatever the roads or land that's kind of connecting there, to reroute it. That way, it's coming from that particular, from the school to school, and it's connecting right directly to 460.
That's the greenfield, so it's a new road, it would be a new construction road that would connect to high school. So we refer to that as greenfield. It's not a renovation of a road. It's a total construction of a new collector, which is sort of a major, for us, it's a major thoroughfare.
If you look at the current route of the bypass, you can see where, back in the 60s, you know, they planned the northern route for 460. And it is almost an exact half circle. And the best way to think about the South Side Collector would be if you just completed that circle. So it would, the way that I've looked at it on a map would be connecting somewhere around Thomasville or Taco Bell, connecting to 460 there, coming down south and looping in the elementary school, and then intersecting, this would all again be greenfield new development, but connecting it to 727 to where you have a full loop. And that would alleviate all of the traffic that currently runs through the dead center of town on 727 and Pump and Station Road. But that's a $40 or $50 million, 20-year project.
It was something we talked about last year to get the traffic off of Lee Grant and railroads and everything.
So that's specific to Appomattox. Okay, good. All right. Little say, you do know I drive a school bus, right?
No, I don't drive, big SUVs, but probably not a school bus.
Drive a school bus. We're looking for drivers. Okay.
The one thing I would add, and maybe it's addressed later, but we've had some discussions with some developers and, you know, the reason why I would want this in the comp plan is simply if it came to fruition, you know, applying for grant money, it's vital that we have the documentation, right? So where I'm going with this is a point of access on 460 directly into Thomasville.
That's what we talked about, adding a ramp.
Yeah, okay.
One thing, I don't know if this would be in either of these points, but the electrical grid is under immense stress, and it's only growing because of the demand of certain industries. But some localities are rolling out, or at least promoting to the utilities requesting it and helping to fund utility-scale battery storage. And I think that could improve reliability. In the rare instance that we've had power outages, a small grid-scale battery could alleviate the town's energy needs for days. So that would be something that I would really enjoy seeing in our comp plan, is just promoting or identifying a location for, to market to utilities to put battery-scale storage.
It was rare, but it was quite long. And I don't think any of us will forget it. It's been, what, four or five years, four years ago?
Well, the duration, I think, had a big impact in 2012. And then we lost power for a few hours, for a day last year. And then it was like a six to 10-hour period in that same year, a couple months before.
Which the town lost power for five days in town.
I'm sorry, please.
It was not a fun event.
The two other things, or one other thing I would mention is, I think that we could, it would probably behoove us to encourage or to look into planning ahead for maybe the small, low-latency data center type developments. Something we kind of learned about this weekend, but something I looked into before. It's doable. This is not a, this is not at all necessarily a 100,000-square-foot building. These are homes, they could be home-sized. But it's, especially for our fiber situation in town, it might be something worth pursuing. And then one thing I would say, I would like to further discuss with council. I'll bring something back regarding the battery storage.
Cool.
We can have a conversation about that maybe at a workshop or something, because there's a lot of benefits and there's also some other things to consider.
Yeah, I definitely, one of the edge data centers, so these can be 5,000 to 10,000 square feet, and they're only going to get more popular as AI starts doing more in the physical world. So like, if you have a whole bunch of sensors or whatever in a building, and, or you have a whole bunch of security cameras or whatever, and you don't want that data leaving Virginia and going somewhere else, a lot of larger companies and even schools and things are starting to build their own AI infrastructure. So I would love for us to put something about planning for edge location or smaller data centers and allowing that in certain zoning designations, just so we're not caught by surprise when a developer asks to put one here. But there's only, for a hyperscale-sized data center like the ones that they're talking about for the park, there's only a handful of locations, like one or two locations that could even work within the town limits. So that would be a case-by-case thing. But the smaller ones, there's certainly potential.
That would be something good to add to the discount plan.
The next goal, enhance tourism experience, increase regional statewide and national awareness, do professional marketing program, support connectivity through the town and the national park, and explore expansion in existing walking bike routes, biking routes, trails, and paths to historic, highlight historic features and resources. Is that goal pretty much in stride with what everybody would like to see? Are there any additions or anything you want to see added to that?
The several hundred acres is owned adjacent to the park, but within the town limits by the, I think a local group actually just got it from the Historic Battlefield Preservation Trust. But I don't know exactly where they're at in their process of building it up or, you know, adding permanent fixtures to that site. But it could be an interesting cooperation between the town and that organization to kind of turn it into a large park, because it's several hundred acres of green space and trees now. It's just, it's a beautiful plot.
Okay. Would you mind getting the name of that organization to me, and I can, you know, try to make sure that is included? All right. Anything else as far as adding? Okay. The next one, improve level of education and job attainment, increase post-high school graduation opportunities, whether that be tech or trade schools, colleges, and then collaborate with workforce investment boards and the CBCC to create marketing campaigns to promote the benefits of higher education and certifications after high school. As we already alluded to, the graduation rate here is very high. It's leading the region in high school graduates. It's now just what happens after high school and post-education, post-high school. And, um, high school graduates, it's now just what, what happens after high school and the post-education, but post-high school education opportunities, um, trade schools, um, those certifications. I know, um, some employers, uh, you have to have certain certifications and, you know, for some folks, they have to go to Lynchburg to, you know, take on those particular credits to get certifications to then use that. So, you know, are there any opportunities to bring some of those things closer, um, to town? Are there any other, uh, well, next is, would we like to keep, um, these particular goals? And are there anything we want to remove or adjust? Okay. Um, and then the final goal, expand, um, housing availability and diversity. Marketing Committee to campaign advantages of living in town, um, support for housing initiatives and review, uh, current zoning ordinances for, uh, availability of all housing classifications. Um, and so what I did put here is, um, as far as just expanding goals, um, we can, should we expand the housing goals and objectives to reflect, uh, to reflect the current trends, um, as was alluded to earlier, um, as far as just affordability within the area currently right now. And I think, two, um, the second, uh, bullet point says expanding the, um, data for the affordable housing, um, options. You guys are second, uh, leading growth of new houses in the region, uh, which is a great thing, it's like, it's basically second behind Bedford County.
Really?
Yes, ma'am.
That's interesting.
And so.
Why don't you go ride the bus with me one day? Show you around.
Twenty-six in total, um, in total units. So that's something I definitely want to look to highlight, um, and then have the data to pretty much back that up within the comp plan. So outside of expanding, I wanted to also add something, uh, within the comp plan as far as water and sewer infrastructure goals, to kind of go in line with, um, pretty much what you guys are doing with your RFP of the, um, the water, um, currently right now for the town. And, um, yeah, that's pretty much all the goals that I, you know, had, had thought about mentioning. I will add, um, the battery storage, um, to the comp plan. Are there any other suggestions or are there any other comments? Anything that I need to, you know, consider adding to the comp plan to make sure it's there? Kind of what Mike, Michael was, um, alluding to is that, you know, we want to make sure that it's, it's documented so that when you go after funding, um, that there is documentation showing that there is, um, you know, something within the town's, um, guidelines that's saying, hey, you want to go after these particular things to make these particular improvements for the town.
I'm not sure where it fits into the categories, but the, uh, some expansion or incentive to get manufacturing back. I mean, we've got the Thomasville building, it has one tenant in it right now, one major tenant. It's a couple of minor tenants in there as well in that complex. I know the data centers are the way eve. I'm coming from way back in the seventies when we were a manufacturing town. We had the garment factories. We had Thomasville come in in the mid-seventies and bring us limited manufacturing, but it, we had a workforce that was well able to support that type of environment. Granted, a lot of it's been offshored and that's been to the detriment of the entire economy of the United States. But we've got to figure out a way to bring that stuff back to hometowns and, and get people working in the hometowns instead of spending your money and head overseas and the many steps it takes to get there. But some, somewhere in here, we need to get that incentivized, something that we can manufacture here. Or incentivize somebody to come in and say, hey, yeah, you have the personnel resources to provide, to provide this as, in an economically viable way. If you can find that one out, you will have the key to a small town America.
I think that is, um, all for the goals. If you guys have any, any other further suggestions, if, if it's not right now, um, I would say I'm taking those suggestions till the end of the week. So if anything does come up, um, this is my contact information. It is in the presentation of the last page, so, um, you can definitely just, feel free to just email me, um, or give me a call, uh, reach out to me. That way I can, you know, basically be working on that and including that within the comp plan and kind of, um, you know, fleshing that out, um, by the end of the month. All right, uh, with that, that is it for my, my side of the presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gray.
Thank you.
When will this final, be finalized, our comp plan?
As it currently stands right now, I'm looking to have a draft by the end of, uh, end of the month, or first of November. It'll be reviewed, uh, for, kind of, public comment for about thirty days. And then by December, we shall have a copy to be able to, um, be presented to you guys after he goes through the planning commission.
Hi, that sounds great. Thank you.
And then we'll be revisiting it shortly after that. We have, uh, after our master utility plan is complete.
Just want to add, we set up a couple of open house, if you will. Uh, the first one was totally washed out. We didn't have anybody. That very Luke gave a visit and Kenley. Then Fredo, I went to, uh, Bane's Coffee Shop and set up last Friday, the third. And we, there was a, in this day and age where everybody wants technology, there was a group of young people, young ladies. Their, their survey was kind of surprising, they really wanted to bring back the ghost tours and find a way to enhance our history. So we're trying to find a way to get with the school system and see if there's any connection there to get them to volunteer maybe to do some of this things, um. It's just kind of, I was kind of taken back that that was their biggest want to see. So I think it's kind of good to see for a small town to have that. But just want to add that to that.
How many, uh, questionnaires were completed at Bane's?
We did it on Facebook, um, and the visitor center collecting them for a week. We're probably over a hundred and forty, so it's a little more than the last time.
Yeah, I would say.
So, yeah, I mean.
That's a, that's a, that's a very, very respectable percentage of turnout for, for our population. These are extremely difficult things, we, no matter where you're at. Where, you know, I come from the greater Richmond area, uh, and even in population centers where you've got, uh, you know, in a small city, you have twenty-five thousand people, you might, you're lucky to get a couple hundred responses.
I, I was thinking, and I think I commented, uh, while we were at the visitor center, uh, that surely, uh, they, at the, the amount of younger folks, not just younger, but a lot of them are in and out of Bane's would be interested to complete these questionnaires. I was thinking that would happen. I was, and I'm happy about it.
It was interesting, we had a couple of people from out of town that were reluctant and like, we need you to tell us.
What do you say that's not here?
When you come here, what do you want to see? Surprisingly enough, a lot of people were like, that's why we come here, because it's not commercialized.
There's two opinions, too, too popular, they don't do anything, leave it the way it is. And, or we have nothing to do, we need to, yep.
All right.
We got to get the happy medium.
One new business we have come forth, council at this time. Standing committee reports. Where do we stand on those?
None.
All right. Citizen comment.
Well, one of the things I noticed about the comp plan, I didn't see anything as it related to economic development for small businesses. So I am a small business owner, um, I moved to that area, um, during the pandemic, so.
Ma'am, could I ask you, go ahead and step to the mic and so we can do this properly. Thank you, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
Were you able to sign in on the sheet over there?
I did not, but I.
I'll ask you to do that before you leave tonight, please.
Yes, sir. So my name is Zamora Olin. I am a resident, I was going to say citizen, but resident of, um, Appomattox. So I was saying, one of the things I noticed about the comprehensive plan was that there was nothing in there as it relates to small business owners. So I am an entrepreneur, I've been in business for ten years. So I moved to the area about four years ago, so all of my networking happens in Lynchburg and abroad. So it would be nice to, um, connect here and bring my resources and everything back to this area. So I want to, um, grow and help the people where I live grow. So it would be nice to see, um, where we can create, create some sort of, um, hub for small business owners here.
That's an excellent suggestion, idea.
Might I ask what, what, what business you're in, ma'am?
I have a, um, technology consulting company. So I, um, do a mixture of commercial and federal contracting work.
Oh, can I ask for follow up? My background is federal contracting, so I'm just curious.
Yes.
What type of IT are you in?
So I, we do, um, digital transformation, we build apps, systems integration type work. And then as it relates to our government contracting, we have some aviation, um, maintenance type contract work that we're doing in addition to, um, workforce development training and contracting professionals, we support, uh, with training acquisition professionals and doing that work with the, within the federal government.
What would be like, if you could just wave a magic wand, what would be the Appomattox small, what would the Appomattox small business community look like? Would it have a physical space? Would it just be events? What, what do you think?
It can be physical, it can be, um, networking in person. There's something about when you get to see, touch and feel, um, your other fellow business owner. Entrepreneurship can be very lonely, so having, um, other entrepreneurs to connect with, um, helps. So, um, you know who you can contact. You need something also, um, you want to be able to partner, um, with other folks that have complementary skills, you know, or that, that are providing services that you can, um, bring them on board. So one of the things I love to do as an entrepreneur, I'm always building strategic partners. So I can't do everything as a small business owner, so I'm always looking for other companies to kind of come in and we go after it together. And I'm also a veteran, so, um, finding, um, other veterans that can come in with me and sort of, um, influence the procurement process that makes a difference.
Because you've got a dynamic workforce, how many of them are in this area? And, uh, in this day and age and with the advent of Starlink, my former boss where I work now is resident of Florida. And the last two times I've talked to him, he's been in Michigan and the Poconos respectively. Is your workforce here or?
We have teams, um, in Arizona and, and the DMV area. So, but I would love to employ folks that live right here. Um, one of the, another problem that I had was finding office space. So I have to, um, have an office space, um, in Lynchburg, but it would be really nice to be able to do that here. So if I live here, I want my money to be here.
Oh, yes, I understand.
So you moved here from Lynchburg area or?
No, ma'am, I moved here from the DC area.
The DC?
Just a shot, just a little bit.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah. So, I'm sorry, what'd you say, ma'am?
I said, I got you, that's interesting.
Yes.
And of course, things in general are somewhat less costly than in northern Virginia.
It is, um, so funny story, my husband and I, we both found a house that we enjoyed and we said, I have a house, I want you to see, and it was the same house. We moved here and we love it, so, um, we would like to see the town grow. So I loved some of the things that you had on there, because these are things that we talk about, um, around our kitchen table, so.
That is.
The improvements.
Are there, are there certain infrastructure improvements you see we need in the town that?
The biggest thing, I think, um, so we love American history in my family, so we go, um, my kids are homeschool. Um, so we like to take trips, um, and see different museums. So knowing the history of Appomattox, we feel like this should be a premier spot on everyone's list. So beautification of the city, um, when you first come into town, um, it is not as pretty as it could be. So that's one of the things I would love to see, just the beautification.
That's a very kind way to.
Yeah, that is keeping it kind.
Yes.
And we realize there are some structures on the periphery and within the town that need to be corrected. And, uh, we've got a team of folks that's working on that diligently. Uh, unfortunately, I've learned the term since I've been in office of the speed of government. And it's not as fast as we would want it to be. The, the certain reactions from the higher levels, actions are faster than they should be anyway.
Yeah. Well, as citizens, we're here to help as much as we can, so, um, thank you for your time.
Thank you for being involved in the process. We appreciate you coming out.
We do, I'm, I'm happy to meet you.
Since we brought some of the topics back up, but about a year ago, we talked about having a workforce incentive program with the high school, with the businesses in town of coming up, if you hired a student of the high school in the town that would give an incentive, the town would put up some money to give a business an incentive to hire these people, to teach them how to use their hands. And I'd like to see us add that to this to probably grow that and, and make it what we was talking about. Um, I don't know where we're going to find, we've got to find the money to back it up. But if we serious about economic development and, and providing people that can do these jobs, we got to put some money to it.
Training.
So I would like to see us add that to the, uh, creating, we already got it in their minds what we want to do, but create a, uh, incentive program. We've already have talked to the people at school about it and they would do a lot of the lead work, lead work on school side for us picking these students, and that's what she's doing now. She's picking these students and getting jobs for them, uh, half a day, they go to school half day and then they go to a real job the other half and learning trades. So I'd like to see us, uh, move forward with that too.
Back in the day, cooperative education was a big part of our school system when I was going through. And we had several students who worked half days, like, take the core classes and, and get their hands on their other jobs. You know, summarized to great things. I was talking to one of my coworkers today, he had a uncle who started off as a crane operator, retired at fifty-six as the chief buyer for heavy duty equipment for SpaceX. He said, yeah, I'm putting in for a job there, so, you know, I don't know what part of SpaceX we can bring to Appomattox, but if that's in the cards, we would like to see it.
We actually, we had, uh, last year, uh, my, uh, we had, um, Timmy invited them from school. It was two teachers, two educators that came when we first started talking about this, but we never been able to get it off the ground. And I would, I'm with Timmy, I would love to see that happen, uh, sooner than later.
We don't do it now, skip a generation and the ideas will dissolve.
They were agreeable, asked to, to work with us to do that, to start that program.
All right.
So maybe we can look into it later.
All right, at this time, I have our town managers' report, sir.
So, um, speaking to the comp plan and, uh, the, you know, one of the reasons why we, we've kept it fairly basic and, and I must say, I truly appreciate Gifredo's, uh, work on this. It's, it's been invaluable. You know, these things are complicated and they can be extremely costly. And with the cooperation of the PEC and with Rob and Gifredo's work, um, this is, this is, we're going to, we're going to be in compliance and we're going to have a good update. I just would, would, uh, put out there that we, uh, we have a lot of things that we know we need to accomplish for the town. The main, the crux of all that is finding the revenue, uh, creating the revenue, uh, to fund, to fund the projects. And as a part of that. to fund the projects. And as a part of that, I believe I sent an email to council, but just informed the general public and council that we conducted, we put out an RFP for a master utility plan. We received some very good proposals. We interviewed three firms and we ended up selecting, I'm happy to say, and it wasn't because we have, we have prior work with them, but that doesn't hurt. We selected CHA to conduct our master utility plan, which they will, they will be utilizing Davenport and Raftellus for financials as a major part of that master utility plan. That, the, the product is, since the town, the main, you know, the main thing that we do here in town is utilities. That's, that's the crux of what we do. Obviously, we have our zoning and we have economic development. I have an update for you on that in just a second. But, you know, the utilities situation kind of, that's your civilization. That's the basis, the bedrock of everything else. That's how you get your economic development. And so the outcome of that master utility plan will be a major driver on how we move forward with everything else. And it will include the finances. It will include reports and options on how to pay for the things that we need and how to plan for our capital needs, really for the next, at least, at least the next decade. It should be a guiding document that really needs to be married to the comp plan because it's, it'll be how the town needs to conduct business for foreseeable future. From an economic development standpoint, I will tell you that I've had some very good talks with Virginia Housing and Chris McNamara and Philip Jamerson regarding the garment factory. I feel like we've come up with, I bounced some ideas off of Mr. McNamara's, I bounced some ideas off of him on. The grants that they offer, the grants that they offer are limited to one sixteenth of the total project cost. So I'm going to meet with Philip next week and go over some game planning on, on how we can get something done with this garment factory for some housing and how we can do that where their grant dollars are, for us, for, for the town of Appomattox, we are required to put up a 25% match. But I'm looking into ways and working with Philip so that the 25% match doesn't necessarily need to be cash. In other words, we don't actually have to put up money. We can, we can do in-kind or we can do, we can donate land. We can, there's a, there's a lot of ways we can work that out. So Chris tells me that there's an opportunity for us to get up to a half a million dollars. And Mr. Jamison had initially asked for 300,000. So if we're successful in this endeavor, we ought to see the garment factory come down fairly quickly in the grand scheme of construction, right? Hopefully, we'll have it knocked down within a year. That would be great, wouldn't it? And then...
Or less, maybe.
Yes.
Be happy with a year.
We just need to, we need the funding and the, the funding in place and we need a proper site plans to get it done. I think the last update I have is just a procedural thing, a policy that I wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of. So we have, on the website, it does need to be updated with Diane's information, but when, when people make a request, they want to FOIA the town, we do have a FOIA email box. It's been there. It's just under Cindy's name, but we're going to have that changed here very shortly, hopefully next week. All four requests from anyone else, I mean, it would obviously be from somebody outside of town, will need to go to the FOIA inbox. And that inbox will direct it to our deputy clerk, to Christie Torrance, our office manager, and to myself. So we will all be aware. And Diane Tanner, our deputy clerk, is our FOIA officer. So just kind of wanted to make everybody aware of that and, and put that out there for the public. If anybody wants, feel free to make any requests. That's just the route that they need to go. It's very easy.
Okay.
It absolutely is. And it streamlines the process when you take the proper steps to ask for FOIA requests.
Yeah, it's really, you really, I mean, you send an email and you just need to be specific what you're asking for. And we'll, you know, we'll work with them and get them, try to get them what they're asked for. I mean, that's...
Is this a template file that generates the email and then it's sent in?
No, I believe, I believe it, it's, it's, it's a hyper-length email address.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But that's, that's something that I've seen in my workplace, that, oh, we need this information. And as you fill this in, once you're done, it puts, as an email, sends it to the proper thing.
Does it, do you know if it opens up to like our, the same text box like we have for, in other words, is it, is it a web-hosted email or does it open up to your personal email account?
It's just the option to email, which is kind of the, the conversation that I was having with you earlier today.
Yeah.
In maybe investigating the contract that posts the website and Unicode, which does the agenda, to kind of have those interface and work a little more seamlessly. That's something that I'm kind of investigating, the, the way that things kind of marry together to make it streamlined.
Yeah, I'll just book in that. But the discussion that we had is, I'm very grateful for Diane and digging into this and seeing if, if there's not a more efficient and possibly even less costly way for us to manage that along, all the way over to our agendas and our publishing instead of using Unicode. You know, she brought this to me today and I think it's a wonderful idea. And so hopefully, we can figure something out and make something happen so that it, we can be as transparent as possible and at the same time, have as few pinch points as possible and, and as little room for mistakes as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. All righty. At this time, I'll entertain our council comments. Mr. Boyce?
I just had a informative weekend at VML and certainly thank town and staff for making the conference available. I think it would sure, certainly be something that would benefit all council members and Mr. Mayor. Because the more that we can learn as a unit, the more we can stay in unity on certain projects or whatever. Another comment I'd like to make, thank you for your service, ma'am. I'm also a veteran. And I know the, I know the trials and tribulations that I can put on a family. But again, thank you for your service. And thank you for coming to town. I mean, I mean, you, you coming from DC, you had a lot of places you could have been. We are certainly glad you landed here. And that's about it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Garrett?
I'm good.
Mr. Hensley?
I'm good.
Mr. Simpson?
Just a couple of things. VML conference was great. I echo Jim. And I think, but Kenley said he was going to have a report for us, but he would keep it short to just one page front and back. So I look forward to hearing that.
It's very short.
Yeah, told me that the other night. The, I haven't had time to form my thoughts on it yet, but we, Timmy and I put in some effort towards the Railroad Festival in regard to our centennial. And we got some stuff printed by Bobby Swanberg, and I think it turned out great. They're still currently in the Train Depot. But I, I think I want to, of course, it's council's discussion and prerogative to, to deal with this. But I had someone approach me at the festival saying, hey, you know, this is a great space. We could do like an exhibit for the fire department or something here. And I think they're right in that obviously, we don't want to staff a full-time museum. But just seeing that space used with, you know, some permanent exhibits set up and then room for rotating or seasonal exhibits that we could open on days like Railroad Festival or other, or the Christmas Festival or other downtown events. I'd really love to see that happen. And we could, the permanent exhibits I would see as, you know, we have some really cool history that we've preserved in the last year with the Times Virginians and some other sources. And getting a few more of those printed out pretty large and mounted to the walls as, as a permanent exhibit. I think that, that would be a huge value to the community and just having a permanent place for the history to be preserved. But that's something I'm, I'm continuing to think about and will put probably a plan together for us to consider. And I wanted to say thank you for coming. And a warning, you sound super into Appomattox, and I love that. But you're going to get thrown on every committee, on every, everything. And you just seem like you've got a lot of energy for the town. And I, you know, it's, it's super important that we have people like you engaged. But if you keep showing that energy, you're going to be put on everything. So just be ready. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Ms. Spiegel?
First, I'd like to ask you if you have a business card you could give us?
Yes, ma'am.
So we could thank you.
And don't run out, Will. We'd like to talk to you.
And I would just like to echo what Nathan said about our centennial display at the Railroad Festival. I thought it was very good. And I spent some time reading all of the, not all of them, but some of the articles. And I think that that is a great, that's going to be if we go that route, because we'll all have to decide this. But that would be an excellent way to utilize the space in the, at the end of the train station, which sits vacant. And I, I'm involved with the Carbon Price Legacy Museum, deeply involved with that, which is in town and at the Carbon Price Complex. And I was talking about that. We have, many museums do that. They have a moving exhibit, meaning they will have an exhibit and it'll last for a certain amount of months. I, I think they do that at the Museum, American...
Civil War.
Civil War Museum. Let me get this straight. I want to say the Civil War Museum. And it's, anyway, they have that. They utilize that. And I think that's an excellent way because if, we're going to have, obviously, a lot of local people coming in and out, in and out, as well as tourists. And you don't want to keep that same exhibit forever and ever because they'll say, have you got anything new? Have, what can I, what can you show me that I haven't seen before? And, because I'm, I'm a tour guide over at the museum, volunteer tour guide because I'm on the board. And I delight in having people learn new things that they knew about it, but they didn't realize. We had a Rosenwald School in the town of Appomattox, one of the few that are remaining across the whole country. And I think that, that's exciting. But after that, then you want to see some exhibits. And I think we've got plenty of things. And I think even Carlton Duck hit on that when he was talking about doing some promos for the town on his live TV and putting out something different each time. So it captures people's interest and they want to listen. They want to hear what's the next, what's going to be the next thing that I can, people who are interested, not just people interested in history, but the everyday people who, we can pique, pique their interest in just the history. We have such a rich history in this community. And I'm all for that, Nathan. And I think that's a great, that's going to be a great way to exhibit. Because the centennial will come and go, but we're still here for 100 years and 101. We have a lot to show you. We want to, we want to show you what our community is like and was like, not just history, but future, future things. So I'm all for that. And that's all I have to say. I've said enough. Somebody's going to tell me to shut up.
No, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just one quick thing.
Yes, sir.
We're getting ready to release a program that's about an hour program on Appomattox County High School. And I sat down with Lou Cunningham. We went through all the educational processes in the school. We're putting the final touches on that. And we should be on air sometime next week with that, talking about highlighting the town.
Are we following, are these items that we're putting out there and to broadcast, for lack of a better term, are these ending up on the internet and on our webpages with links for the town?
They will.
They will? Okay. That's fine.
Good. That sounds great.
You don't really have on your, to my knowledge, on your internet website, you don't have any place for video, to my knowledge. No media was put into that when it was developed. It really needs it. And the Facebook page needs things like this because if you don't have things, things on there every weekday that's fresh, people don't come back. I deal with this all the time.
Yes, sir. We do, too.
And it's, and that's the only way you keep it, get people into it.
We deal with it on a daily basis. I understand that.
And want to see something new and interesting.
Yes.
All the time.
Anyone else have any more business coming for the Town of Appomattox Council at this time?
I'm making a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second?
Motion made, properly seconded. Any discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Imposed. We are adjourned. Thank you, folks.